Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Lennox Board of Selectmen meeting for Wednesday, September 22nd at 7:00 PM in Town Hall. This is our regular meeting. I have a couple of announcements from the Chair. First, I want to recognize the passing of Elliot Morse, who was the Chairman of the Lennox Finance Committee for a number of years up until about this past year. He's offered tremendous advice and support for Lennox's financial status and always had a great perspective about what was going on in Lennox. He was also on the Master Plan Commission for three years and offered really insightful contributions to the Economic Development Chapters, to the Services and Facilities Chapters that the Master Plan Commission put together and just really put his heart and soul into it. He really cared a lot about the town of Lennox, the citizens, and in doing his best for the town. I know that he'll be missed for all of his contributions and we thank him for his caring service to everyone in the town. Next, I'd also like to thank the Chamber for their work on Art Walk this past weekend. There were a number of vendors, I noticed, through social media on Instagram that were participating. It seems like they all had a great time. It looks like there were a lot of townspeople participating and it looked like everybody was pretty safe and socially distant from what I could see through my social media feed. And I really appreciate everyone's cooperation with the masking and the physical distancing during the course of Art Walk. So, thanks to everyone for that. And now I'll entertain the acceptance of the minutes from September 10th.
I'm not sure if we can introduce ourselves.
Oh, thank you.
Roll call ourselves.
Okay, well, roll call ourselves first at the beginning of the meeting. Why do I never want to do that?
Ed Lane. Neil Maximilian, present.
Mary Beth Mitz, present.
Lauren Archie, present.
Thank you.
Chris, can we get clarity that we still are required to do that in person?
I'll double check that.
Great, thanks. Dave Roach is not here tonight. Now, I'll entertain acceptance of the minutes from September 10th.
Madam Chair, I move to accept the minutes of September 10th.
Second.
Second, I'm sorry.
Great, that's all right. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much.
Our usual secondaries.
Yeah, yeah. First day.
So, Citizens Open Forum. Is there anyone here who'd like to speak about any particular issue? Seeing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. So, for today's consent agenda for Wednesday, September 22nd, we have a donation acceptance from Police Chief O'Brien seeking permission to accept a monetary donation. We also have a donation acceptance from the Fire Chief O'Brien seeking permission to accept a monetary donation. We have an appointment. Darlene McCauley is seeking the appointment of Shannon O'Brien to the Community Center Board, replacing Stephen Kuhn until 2024.
Can we put a hold on that?
Sure. We have a change of manager. TWG Lennox Manager LLC, doing business as Seven Hills Inn, is seeking our approval for the change of manager to Kathleen Myers. And also, we have a one-day-all-alcohol license and outdoor entertainment license for Seven Hills. They are seeking a one-day-all-alcohol license for Saturday, September 25th, from 3:00 to 11:00 PM for a wedding.
Please hold on one, please.
Sure. This license will cover the lawn in front of the terrace house, an area which is not included in their annual liquor license premises. In addition, they would like permission to place a speaker outside on the veranda on Friday, September 24th, from 3:00 to 9:00 PM during their welcome party. Also, they are looking to plan to have a DJ outside under a tent from 2:30 to 8:00 PM for a wedding. And there have been additional emails regarding other events, but those will be coming to us at another time. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with being aware of a hold?
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented, subject to the hold asked for.
I'll second it.
Great, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you. Okay, the hold on the Community Center appointment.
I just wanted to, you know, welcome Shannon O'Brien to the board or to the Community Center Board and thank her for doing it. But obviously, she wants to put a lot of time in from her paper she wrote. But the main thing I wanted to do is just acknowledge Steve Kuhn. He was on there, I have no long, no idea how long he was on there, but he's been on there a long time. He put a lot of effort into it over the years, so. Steve's a good man and he put a lot of time and effort into it, so, thanks.
Terrific, that's great. And Mr. Maximilian, you put a hold on Seven Hills.
Yes. When we discussed liquor license hours and closing hours of liquor licenses in general, I just want to make sure this is consistent with it, and I'm assuming it is because they're smart people and they probably wouldn't have written something that wasn't. But I note that they're asking from 3:00 to 11:00. I don't recall having made a specific, you know, modification to our bylaws, but 3:00 to 11:00 is a long time to keep the open bar.
Yeah, so when we reestablished our policy some time ago, we reset the end time limit. I believe we set it at midnight.
We did with last call being 11:00.
Last call being 11:00, yeah. Yeah. So, this would conform to that portion. However, I don't know that we dealt with duration.
That's why I raised the issue. I know we discussed it.
I think we did.
From the standpoint of, I think at the time, we had requests before us that ended at midnight or 1:00 and started at something like 5:00 or 6:00. We thought, geez, that's a long time. So, this is conforming, but I don't have any basis to argue against it. I just wanted to clarify.
I mean, it may indeed be something worth revisiting in terms of duration. Perhaps not with this application.
Yep, no, your point is well taken. And I think that's what we were trying to avoid with the prior cap, is duration. So, I think that's very valid and we can certainly take it up at another meeting.
Sure, thank you.
Thank you. So, moving on to general business.
We have to vote on this one.
Oh, we have to move on this one, okay, great. Would anybody like to come and speak about the Seven Hills licensing?
Can I introduce myself to you guys?
Sure, come on up.
Just up to the microphone?
Yes, please. If you could come up to the microphone and tell us your name.
The microphone's not for amplification, it's for television.
So, my name's Kathleen Myers. Everybody calls me Katie. I'm the new General Manager over at Seven Hills and first time doing selectmen meetings, so very excited to be here and nice to meet you guys. Any questions or anything?
Well, I do think that you heard the Board's concern about the duration of the event. You're within the hours limitation, which is great. However, additional vigilance, you know, making full use of the TIP certification of our tenure and the training that goes into that is something that we'll be looking for attention to detail for. And it may, in fact, any future applications may come post-review by the Board of the overall policy. So, just something to keep in the back of your mind as you plan future events.
And when you guys, do you have a vote on something like that? Where can I find information about that?
I will distribute it.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that we would be included in that decision.
Seven Hills is certainly on that list of establishments along with the Mountain and other folks who make frequent use of the one-day permitting.
Awesome, thank you. All right, guys, thanks so much.
The best thing is to keep a real good communication with Mary Ellen.
Yes.
She's our, she takes care of everything.
She's been fantastic with all of my questions.
A lot of times, things come in and it's like the 11th hour and we're trying to scramble, trying to figure out how to accommodate things.
Right, yeah.
You know, just soon, you know, just talk to her a lot.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. I did ask a lot of questions and, like I said, she was fantastic with getting right back to me and saying, "You don't want to do it this way, do it this way." And I'm like, "Thank you so much for your help." So, yeah, thank you for that.
That's great. Thank you, Katie, for introducing yourself.
Welcome, Katie.
We really appreciate it. Okay, fantastic. So, if we can entertain a motion to approve those two held items.
Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve the held item regarding the appointment to the Community Center Board of Shannon O'Brien and to approve the one-day-all-alcohol license request from Seven Hills on Saturday, September 25th.
I'll second it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Great, thank you very much. Now, we'll move on to general business. Tonight, Katie O'Neil is going to give us a presentation and overview of the Lennox Library's strategic plan.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you. It's been a while since I've been here in front of you all. I'm Chris.
Of course.
Thank you. And would you like, would you like one?
Aye.
Katie, would you like one since we're here? So, Mary Ellen was going to distribute the poll plan to you, but I created just a little bit of a cheat sheet with some of the highlights. So, we were due to renew our strategic plan last year and began that process pretty soon after I came on as Director in December 2019. And then, as you know, the world changed and the Mass Board of Library Commissioners was very kind to offer an extension to all of the libraries with expiring plans in 2020. So, we had until October 1st of 2021 to complete. So, at the beginning of this calendar year, we re-engaged our committee and started that process. We have just gotten approval from Mass Board of Library Commissioners about a week ago that we have successfully completed everything that's required. So, this, the plan is on file with the state, which makes us eligible for grant funding, like the one that Amy Lefebvre recently received for the Archives. So, that's a big bonus to having the plan. In addition to, it's something I really believe in. This is my third strategic plan I've written for a library specifically and it's great to have a roadmap and to have the data from the community and the input into what they really need and want from us. So, just a few highlights we did do. We had a committee that met and had two brainstorming sessions. Mary Beth participated in that to get feedback from people within the community. And we also did a user survey that was available for about two months' time. We had 208 responses to the survey. I was really pleased with that. So, there's just a few highlights at the top here. That's primarily from the survey. But 63% of the users visited the library once a month and 27% visited at least once a week, which is wonderful. And I can tell you, we've been closed for two days this week for tech upgrades and our hold shelves are overflowing. So, we are definitely getting used and borrowing books is still the number-one reason that people come to the library. But, social aspects, visiting, coming to programs, volunteering, account for three-quarters of respondents' visits, which is almost on par with book borrowing. So, that's a really important component of the services that we provide and also the use of the physical space, including the reading park, also very popular. 98% of respondents rated library customer service as excellent or good and staff were the top-name asset of the library. So, I think as a town, as municipal employees, we can be really proud of our staff and the tremendous customer service that they provide. There's quote here, "The warm and welcoming faces of the librarians who are always there to make connections and bridge you to new worlds." So, as a library staff member, really nice to see that. And 95% gave the library overall an excellent or good rating. So, we're meeting the community's needs. There are a few quotes here from users that say, "The library is the heart of Lennox, a year-round space where everyone is welcome and a vital part of the Lennox community." And this one, I thought, was really touching. "The only venue that cares about the things that are important to me and my neighbors." So, we're making impact and that's really important. In terms of what they would like to see coming from the library, you can see here the top five services most important for the library to offer. Inner library loan, assistance from librarians, services for children, access to computers and Wi-Fi, and local history collections and programs. This really dovetailed with a lot of the conversation and brainstorming that we had in the sessions as well. And then, there's some program topics of interest there, you'll see. Certain themes emerged out of the data that we received and these four words kept occurring over and over. Community, connection, communication, and culture. And we really see the library as sort of sitting at the intersection of those words and those values and they really inform our work on a day-to-day basis, which helped us sculpt our updated mission statement. The mission of the Lennox Library is to connect our community to resources and programs that encourage lifelong learning and celebrate our collective history and culture. You can see our goals. There are many action items that come under each of the goals if you look at the full strategic plan, which is also available on our website if you don't want to print it up, because it is about 30 pages. And so, continuing to offer a wide array of engaging, high-quality programs for all ages, maintain collections and resources that support lifelong learning in the community, improve access to and promotion of the local history collection, which with the appointment of Amy as local history librarian, when I came on board, has really gained a lot of speed and she has a fantastic Moving Lennox program coming up the first weekend in October and was just discovering new things. Literally, right before I left, she ran into my office and was telling me new information that she's discovered. Providing a welcoming, comfortable community space where individuals can connect with one another and to the resources they need and enjoy. We're really also going to take that to heart for our teens in the community. That was a really big component that came up in our discussions, that we have the Community Center for our younger youth, but the teens kind of age out and we want them to have a space to go where they feel welcome and comfortable. And Jenny Malloy, our youth librarian, has been doing a tremendous job engaging youth. We have so many teen volunteers. We formed a teen advisory group and it's been great. So, we really look forward to building upon that. And then, the last is kind of a business one, but ensure that the library has the appropriate policies, staffing, and infrastructure in place to deliver high-quality services to the public. So, our IT upgrades is part of that. You can see the committee list here, just really thankful to everyone who participated, most of whom are Lennox Presidents. Deb Cody, Kay Cuthbertson, Andrea Fox, Alexis Brown Kennedy, Amy Lefebvre, and Jenny Malloy, and myself from staff, Brendan Matthews, Darlene McCauley from the Community Center, Mary Beth, Jen Knopf from the Chamber, and Danielle Stern from the LLA Board. And those are some people that also helped us with facilitation of the plan. So, that is hopefully a brief overview and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the plan or anything else that's going on at the library.
I just, I think it's really fantastic because I think that your outreach to the community also helped you guys come to the new policy that you put in place with new hours, so it can be open Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday night until 7:00 to help the high school students. And that there are no more fines at the library should you return a late book, which is probably, you know, you might lose a little bit in finances, but I think you're going to make up with goodwill in the community and it'll help people to not feel bad that they've actually had that book under their bed for two months and bring it back.
Absolutely, absolutely. Those are just, you know, two examples of things that we've already hit the ground running with input from this process. And so, we have our action plan. We will submit an action plan December 1st to the Mass Board of Library Commissioners. We submit that each year. So, we have our goals for the coming year. And as a last bit, I would just invite all of you to participate with us a week from tonight at 5:30. We are sponsoring a Rise Together Walk in support of Elizabeth Freeman Center and Mary Beth will be joining us, as a captain, Smitty will be joining us and that'll take off in Retreating Park at 5:30. So, I'd just like to make a plug. We will be safe and social-distanced and masked, but it would be great to see some turnout from the town for that event.
Absolutely.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you so much, Katie. Thanks for this presentation. It was really enjoyable to go through this strategic planning process. It can be a little dry sometimes, but even over Zoom, the facilitator made it engaging and you've come up with a really useful, you know, not gathering dust-on-the-shelf plan, which is terrific.
This is a living document. I know a lot of people say that, but it's nice to have that input, that feedback, to underscore the work that we're doing and these are actions that you'll see take place. And so, I look forward to giving you updates as we go through the plan.
Thank you so much.
So, I, okay. First, I'd like to comment or compliment, is the word I was looking for, you and the rest of the folks involved on the effort here. This is a very well-done plan. The questions asked seem to be very appropriate. I would be more than thrilled if strategic plans all came with a two-page summary that's comprehensive and all inclusive. So, you know, it reflects your expertise. It reflects the hard work of everyone involved. So, kudos to all of you. And then, my only question really is, some of the critical offerings of the library, which coincide with the goals, I'm curious how they've been affected by distancing and sanitary policies, like if we up our interlibrary loaning of books. I don't know how that works, whether the books get sanitized somehow.
Sure, there was.
Use of computers, you know, the things where there's obvious touchpoints.
Right, so, yeah, I mean, we just had, like, so many of us had to pivot and think outside the box a little bit about how we continue to offer these types of services in a COVID environment. So, with technology, you know, we added, last summer, when we knew we were going to be closed to the public, we added a wireless access point that pointed out to the reading park. We upped our fiber speed because we're on the mass broadband initiative, so we have fiber internet at the library. We upped it to our maximum speed. We upgraded all of our wireless access points so that if people were in the library or outside the library, they'd be able to access. There was actually a national-level study done. The Institute of Museum and Library Services conducted materials testing on how long the COVID virus lived on various types of library materials. Thankfully, not too long. So, at first, we were quarantining materials. We just leave them in the gallery for a couple of days and then, it was determined that 24 hours is more than adequate. So, which was really just overnight in most cases. We've socially-distanced computers, so we don't have as many. But most people are taking advantage of the Wi-Fi and there's still enough physical computers for people to use. Programs have shifted to Zoom. We had three programs, in-person programs scheduled for September and so, the new directive switched all to Zoom. One was wonderfully attended. We had 100 people for Hannah Wool, a Lennox native. That was last week. And then, we had our first distinguished lecture series last Sunday with Mark Oppenheimer. That's coordinated by Jeremy Yidkem. And then, next week, we have another Lennox author, Marilyn House, who'll be talking. So, we've just tried to keep moving and keep doing as much as we can. Like everyone else, it's certainly impacted. The biggest thing was the hours. You know, the survey came in a time where we had just kind of gone back to full services. So, a lot of the comments were, "Bring back hours, bring back," you know, "everything in the library," sort of at the beginning of the process. And we were, we just had to do it in line with health guidelines. So, I think we've done our best to really keep everyone safe. That's extremely important to us. All of our staff willingly and happily got vaccinated. I didn't, you know, that was not a conversation I had to have with anyone. Everyone says, "Katie, I'm going to get my vaccine this day." So, I think in that capacity, everyone's been really vigilant and doing their best to provide service.
Thank you.
Thank you, Neil.
Yeah, so, I agree with Neil. I mean, this is one of the best strategic plans, I think, I've seen in a long time. It's really a fantastic job. It really truly was. And it made me, you know, it's funny because about 30 years ago, I probably said or sometime, "What in the world's a library going to do? How are they going to survive? What are they going to be like years from now? This is the kind of stuff it's going to be like." Something I never would have dreamt of, but, you know, thank God that that's what's happening, you know. So, it's a really good job. And one other point I wanted to make, and I noticed in the, I read the strategic plan and the pie chart of the age of the respondents. The 13- to 17-year-old, I think it was, there was like one response. And that's what I liked about this, you're aiming to that group to do some work with them to get them involved, so.
Absolutely. Jenny has just been a tremendous asset in that regard and she knew Alexis Kennedy at the high school previously, just as a patron. So, having that connection's been really helpful. We had the superintendent, when he arrived, asked to meet with us and we had a wonderful conversation with Mark. So, I feel really great about our potential to build on our relationship with the schools and offer more services in concert with them for students. So, yeah, I'm really excited about where this plan's going to lead us. And, you know, librarians are very adaptable creatures by trade. So, you know, we'll keep evolving and keep pivoting and keep inventing, as is necessary.
Thank you so much, Katie.
Thank you very much.
That's great when we have a town department that comes and shows us, not just us, but can show the public what is going on on a day-to-day basis and how you're moving forward and, you know, doing things for the entire community at every level, at every age level. So, thank you so much.
Katie, solid plan and very nice presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Great, I'm going to move on to Board of Selectmen Liaison Reports.
I got nothing.
You got nothing, okay.
I just want to take this time to veer off path a little bit and acknowledge Elliot Morse as well and the times that I've spent with him working on what he was working on with the FinCom and the just undeniable depth that he went into, all of his analyses, and out of pure care for the town. So, I wanted to acknowledge that. I also wanted to acknowledge the Art Walk. As I was there in person, I thought it looked well-run, well-distanced, not overcrowded despite there being no parking spaces available. So, to me, it seemed like it was well-done. And then, finally, I want to acknowledge Patty and the modifications that she made to the Josh. From all accounts that I've heard, the Josh was enjoyable by the participants, albeit, you know, at half-size compared to normal, but seemed to go off well. People did not seem to get, you know, the gathering didn't happen, which was the big goal. And, you know, many people that participated told me they thought it, you know, they missed that, but they thought it went fine.
So, how will they distribute the mugs this year?
Well, everybody, yeah. They've already done it. They've done that, yeah.
Well, good, good for them. That's great. That's great. Well, I don't have anything except that I'm really happy that Katie got to come and present the strategic plan for the library. Things appear to be running very well here at Town Hall with people masking indoors and, you know, doing their best to provide services and do it in a safe manner. It's fantastic. And thank you for the report on the apple squeeze. I was out of town this weekend, so I appreciate, you know, your report on that.
Art Walk.
Art Walk, thank you. Art Walk, apple squeeze. I'm very confused. Warren?
Just a minor item, my tree warden responsibilities. Patty Spector and Del Gop and I will be putting out little notices, little signs by the trees. Patty was concerned that not enough people know what species of trees we planted. And over the years, I've been involved with DPW in planting about 250 trees going back 15, 20 years. And so, we'll have little signs saying what they are because there's apparently a lot of curiosity in that issue, item, that I didn't know about. And they won't be around, all of them, but as we change species and put in different species, we'll have little signs, so people will get. I unfortunately think the signs may disappear from time to time, but we hope they'll stay right where they are and be informative. So, that's all on that.
That's great. It's funny that you should say that. I had some relatives in from out of town a couple of weeks ago and they were, they were like, "I know what a maple tree is, but I don't know what some of these other ones are." There seem to be quite a few, so naming those out as poplars or birches, that'll be very helpful.
A lot of lindens.
I'm sorry?
A lot of lindens.
Yes. The lindens and red maples are fortunately two- Yes. What, one, the lindens and red maples are fortunately two species that could be planted roadside and not be damaged by road salt. That's not true of evergreens. It's not true of a number of other species. So, there's been a big emphasis on that. The rule of thumb for the, for harvest is not planting more than 15% of the same species. So, you don't get the situation we have, like in Pittsfield, where that beautiful row, rows of elms on Tows Street were decimated, and they all went. And that, if you remember, and I do, back in the '60s and '70s, that was a beautiful street because of that. It's changed substantially now. Anyway, so, we're identifying trees.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Now, we're going to move into executive session to discuss strategy with respect to negotiations with non-union personnel, specifically the town manager, and we will not be returning to public session.
And this will require a roll-call vote. Madam Chair, I move to, move to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to negotiations with non-union personnel, town manager, and note that we will not be returning to this room.
Paul Suckett.
Ed Lane, aye.
Neil Maximilian, aye.
Mary Beth Mitz, aye.
Lauren Archie, aye.
Thank you. That passes, and we will not be returning to public session. Thank you. And our next regular meeting will be Wednesday, October 6th, at 7:00 p.m.